But we're excited about that, and she's been doing a lot. And we are looking to work with our school system, with the libraries there in the schools, as we will be an information hub and resource center for the entire community in large. So we're excited about that, and I just wanted to make that announcement. So, thank you to everyone for your support. It has been a very long five years to get the library back open. But we're here, we're here, we're here. And we're really excited about that. And thanks to Papa Works and everybody for helping us to clean up and everything. But I'm supposed to pray, I'm not supposed to be doing church announcements. Okay, let's pray. Father, we are so thankful for all of your blessings in our lives each and every day. You are our strength and our hope. We thank you for your blessings on this city. And we ask you for your continual peace and provision and protection each and every day. Thank you for every family at home that is represented. And we ask you for your blessing. Meet every need spiritually, physically, emotionally, and financially. Father, we thank you right now to bless our leaders of the city. Bless each and every department head and every staff member. Minister to every need and every home, and for everything, we give you praise. And as we go into this meeting, we ask you for your grace. And in all that you do in our lives, we give you glory and honor. And we thank you for all that you do and who you are in our lives. And as in Christ's name we pray.
Any questions on the bills? The motion in second. All indicate by saying aye or oppose nay motion carried. Next item on the agenda, approval of my last regular scheduled meeting. It's kind of anecdotal, like here's a journalist, Councilor Jennifer Johnson. And my name was Richardson, with three R's O. Any questions on the minutes? The proper motion in second. All indicate by saying aye or oppose nay motion carried. Item number seven, approval of minutes from our special call meeting on September 2nd, 2025. Alright, the proper motion and second. Any questions on the bill? Indicate by saying aye or oppose nay motion carried. Let's move to the next item on the agenda. Item number eight, approval of resolution 2025 dot zero nine dot zero two. Travel Resolution Board Magistrate Your Honor Jones to attend the 2025 Annual Municipal Clerks and Magistrates Conference in Orange Beach, Alabama from September 24th to September 28th in the amount of $2,426,377. Any questions? Have it heard enough? All indicate by saying aye or oppose nay motion carried. Item number nine, approval of resolution 2025 dot zero nine dot zero three. Travel Resolution for magistrate supervisor, court clerk Carolyn Wilson to attend the 2025 Annual Municipal Clerks and magistrate conference in Orange Beach from September 23rd to September 28th in the amount of $2,698,587. The proper motion in second. All indicate by saying aye or oppose nay motion carried. Item number ten, approval of resolution 2025 dot zero nine dot zero four. Travel Resolution for the city clerk slash magistrate Valencia Ratcliffe to attend the 2025 Annual Municipal Clerks and magistrate conference in Orange Beach, Alabama from September 23rd to September 28th in the amount of $2,913,997. The proper motion in second. Alright, next item on the agenda. Approval business license for Sage Beautiful beginning LLC. Mr. Specter, does this location meet necessary zoning requirements?
I haven't been called out, have you?
She's here, yes.
I haven't been called out, have you? She says he's out here too, but he hasn't been. Alright, I haven't been out there.
You haven't?
Someone called me. Someone else called me.
He didn't speak to me. One of the firefighters went to do an inspection and found out that there were no business. It's always need to be. Right. That's where we are now. And then most talking about earlier in the week, oh, we didn't have a chance to go around.
So she does not have a certificate of occupancy?
I haven't been out there.
I'm here, I do, through Jefferson County. I was never told that I need a business license for Midfield City. When I first came out, four or five years ago, when I got approved from the first fire chief for approval of my business, I went to Jefferson County to get my business license. So, just to keep up with everything that's going on, I called the chief to come back out just to inspect, make sure I'm following the rules of the city. So I was told that I need a Midfield City business license as well.
Absolutely, you do.
Okay.
Well, we need to go out and see if they already have something from Jefferson County, is that correct?
Yes.
They need to come out and take a look at the facility, see if they need to go. You know, he can come back at that point.
How soon can you do that?
We'll do it tomorrow, I just haven't been out there.
Is that fine?
Is that fine?
Yes, I've been open running for five years now.
Okay, which address?
1001 W. Rose, Midfield.
Okay, is that over there with?
On top of the hill.
Okay, the new building, new facility?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, we did, I'm sorry, we did inspection, that's what I was saying.
Okay.
Uh, that was, uh, right, well, I thought I did all those certificates.
Yes, you do, but they tell me I need a city business license.
Give me a chance to go back over my notes and do paperwork and be a real collector.
Sure.
The building is fine, it's a brand-new building. I know what you're talking about now.
Alright. Thank you, case, should I take a look at the table? The proper motion in second. All indicate by saying aye or oppose nay. Alright, he's going to take a look at the report from the mayor. Chief Bell, police department.
Good evening, everyone. Last night, about 10:50, he was trying to shoot the car on the 200 block third avenue. Uh, when he was trying, he was trying to be able to shot on the porch. Transported to the hospital. Uh, he's had, I know, two surgeries so far since last night. Uh, the hood, from what we deduced, entered until it exited out his thumb. So he got, uh, some, some, uh, a little recovery. Uh, it was, uh, from our initial investigation, we showed him a dispute with a visitor at a neighbor's house. About possible car accident, and it just escalated to a shooting. So, we're in the process of identifying the shooter. And once we identify him, we'll, we'll tell you more.
So he knows who shot?
Yes, sir. He doesn't know who it is, but when he got home last night, he was confronting, uh, about possibly hitting the neighbor's friend's car. And it just escalated into a physical altercation and shots being fired. Also, I want to remind everybody that we do have active working speed cameras on Wood, uh, we've got two by the elementary school and then one up in the one thousand block. Uh, they are active, they are working, and we are issuing citations on them. Speed limit's a thirty miles an hour on Wood. We give a certain amount over the speed limit before we issue a ticket, but everybody needs to be maintaining the speed limit of thirty miles an hour. If you go, uh, you know, fast enough, you run, run the risk of getting a citation sent to you and me. So I just want to make sure everybody, everybody knows, we've got signs posted. Uh, so, they are active, they're working, they're working there. That's all I have.
One of the, um, bills that's missing, I can't cross the, bills that don't have, um, invoices or written properly, we have to process.
Yes, ma'am.
And I've got several different police officers who are buying things from, um, O'Reilly's that were not authorized through you, apparently, that they're just going there and buying stuff. And I have a list of officers, I won't call their names, but I have a list of officers and think that they purchased. Uh, I know we have things in place, in place, that it should go through the, um, street department mechanic in order to, okay, street mechanic, um, process in order to get things through the, for the police department. So I'm concerned because, you know, um, they're spending and buying stuff that I just don't understand. A cup holder, um, windshield wiper blades, they're getting batteries, uh, phone holders, covers. I mean, I just don't understand why they're being allowed to do that without getting prior authorization.
I would have to look at what you're purchasing, I'd see, uh, some sort of mechanic. And I, I know recently he's been out. He just got back to work the other last week. So we were having to do some, I want to say, got oil and everything. I would have to look at, look at the purchases and see. But I've been waiting to sit there and answer your question.
Well, that's what I want to say, because, you know, think first, you know, our budget is, you know, now, this is the time, we're trying to make sure that we're not overspending. Uh, this is our slack time to hear from our finance department. So I'm very concerned about, um, the amounts and things that get purchased.
Listen, uh, you want to pop, this one.
Well, I would have to go with, why we're not going through our own control, you know, so I might.
We do.
But they're going to get it theirself.
Like that, the mechanic without, they need to pour the oil, he goes to pour the oil.
Uh-huh, right there. They can handle that, because all the stuff comes through his department. He's also the mechanic, so he knows when everything that comes in is that. If the mechanic won't, ten, ten dollars on the oil, be approved. Ten dollars on the oil is at the, two and a set session department. That we should not be getting anything from the police, given cars, unless it goes through the mechanic or my. Everything needs to be signed up by him. Too many hands is in the pot and needs to stop. We, we've been through countless times, man, and someone's got to give.
It's a difference in oil and cup holders and batteries and stuff, oil is needed, but that stuff there that she's talking about, I don't understand that.
Yeah, if we, everybody said, I can live out with it, if we can figure out what they were purchasing for.
I, I just, I mean, I'm just not a dumbfounded.
Just make an exception on the oil, because we do use a lot of oil in that.
But you got a lot in the street department too, don't you?
Well, I have to go purchase.
Okay, so if you purchase, then it can come to you.
And I mean, that's how we get, you know, we talked about it before, about letting people just come down there and get stuff. But apparently they have a purchase order in their system that's sitting there. And we're going to have to do something and write in to get them to.
I can tell you, after the lady who won't purchase it, everybody will go through there. Because, yeah, this, this is going to be a question I have to answer.
Okay. Yes, yeah.
So James, so you're saying it's just an open purchase order?
Apparently it's in their system, and they're letting them, when they go in there to get stuff, they're just allowing them to get it, and they've got to think that, I don't think that's necessary. Like cup holders and different little things that they purchase, I don't think that's.
Well, you gotta talk about O'Reilly's, you know, O'Reilly's, you know.
Yeah, that is not necessary, because they're not supposed to do that. Unless they have a PO. And that's the thing we put in place a while back, that they have to have a PO before they go purchasing anything. So apparently they're not doing that. And I think that's O'Reilly's fault, it's their last, you know, it's not going to properly change the situation. Yes, ma'am.
And on the subject, what are we going to do about this overtime, Jeff?
The what?
Overtime.
The overtime?
Yeah, they are, police department are draining the city with overtime.
When you're three officers short, you're going to burn the time.
Not as much as we're paying.
What I would get is that if we had three officers who was on full-time, we paying them full-time salary and benefits, we actually are better off right now paying the overtime than having the three officers. So, we actually to the good. So, you're going to get that when you have these officers short. The good thing about it is that Chief Bell is bringing new people on.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Let me ask you a question, are you signing up on this overtime? I do, so, so, yeah. So, when it goes to the list of now, are you going to sign off on it, or are you going to pull these people out of overtime?
I sign off on it anyway, I, I do my payroll, nobody else, and I just talk to everyone. When the schedule is done, we look at it, and since I've had a conversation with Mayor Richard, I've had a conversation with Valencia, and also had a conversation with you. And about a month ago, we, we dropped off to a hundred hours just by making changes to people's schedules. So we, and then we're, we moved the schedule that was doing at me on certain days, but it was short. So we're not screwing you about overtime. Even on this, this one today, we're cold. I'm about a hundred hours lower than what I really am. So, but it's, it's, it's going to affect the hours, because you had a holiday. So still, I'm reflecting more hours. Even though we subtract the holiday from every person, we still about a hundred hours lower than what we're on a month. I'm still first going to tend to that, but she, she also looks at payroll. That our payroll has come down in the last, last few weeks, in the last month. That's your first time to come to you. Or there's a conversation that's running down, it needs to come down.
My next question is, gas, five thousand dollars in gas? We're running up, people running up the streets, and people say we don't see us. That's a lot of gas.
Well, we burn gas also.
People ain't looking, if they don't see us. That, that's a lot of gas. That means they're killing it every day. Every day. We have to get a hold of some things.
We need to rent it, or not make the pro.
We need to get a hold of the mileage compared to whether I have given up. If they driving eighty-seven miles a day, they're killing it. Uh, uh, just, uh, where's our car going, at least twenty feet, if we're in the market?
I said it, you're not giving it mileage in the city.
I got you, but I'm just saying, we, we need to have, well, they go to the gas, the mileage needs to be over there. And if you have, uh, what's, what's we do?
And call the private, that they took their mileage. When they go to get gas, or call it, they're there by the way.
Now, I don't get anything on that. We need to verify mileage, say, not fifteen, I see. We need to look at what they started with on mileage, with the end, they went on target, or they started back out with a hundred. So we know that the mileage is paying up for the gas, that is a lot of, and a lot of gas coming out. I mean, if they're going to be just coming out this year, all the boys been related. Look at, one department, you can tell, we can't give nobody away. We, we can't, we back away out. These are just gone because where they're going. He's going out on one department. We need, we need the manager just a little bit, so.
That's all I got.
Any other questions, Chief Bell? Alright, Chief Davis, five hundred.
We've been, we've been, no major incidents for the past couple of days. Uh, working closely with Chief Bell, getting all the strain CPR we had for the past day, often at six, four, or twenty, twenty. Also looking at, um, doing some of this part of the trailer, sort of CPR training. And other than that, it's been you.
Alright, any questions for Chief Davis?
Yeah, she has that officer right there, I've worked with her, how you doing?
They took it down home last week, you know, it's coming down, I've been monitoring, you know, it's trying to do everything.
It's coming. Motion to see the inspector.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Uh, on the last council meeting, you had six inspections, seven stop work orders, uh, five new building permits, four electrical permits were sold, and one mechanical. Also, Jaws did a, uh, I guess you could call that, they haven't done a grand opening. They're planning to get with the city on that. But they had a dry run this week, this past weekend, uh, I don't know if a lot of y'all seen that.
Yeah, I'm a little bit in the purchase.
Okay. Yeah, he said he was just doing, trying to get, fit out all the bugs with the system, and then he'll do a random. Also, uh, with Caesar, we'll be down there in Caesar tomorrow, uh, doing inspections. So hopefully, we can get a seat over to them this week, hopefully.
Great.
And they pass, and, and the health department, at least. That's all I have.
Thank you, how's Novacarita's supermodel?
Um, they're, have, they were supposed to call us today to do their fire alarm system. We haven't heard from them, at least I haven't. So hopefully they ever call this week, and we can get all that resolved. That's the only thing that's pending is that fire alarm system for them to open up. That's all I have.
Thank you, any questions for the city inspector?
Actually, but it may not be more, but we're trying to, uh, owe that from this building. We, we just paid them five thousand dollars, get all their wires and stuff redone. We have a long system down there, everything that can monitor that building.
We, there's a long system there, but I don't, I think it needs to be transferred over to the city.
Uh, so, yeah, we really do, uh, because that is a threat that's still, you know, all these vacant buildings,
uh, if they're vacant for a period of time, that's what is going on. I know it's probably the same individual, because, uh, all the vacant buildings, at least the commercial buildings, they've been stripped out, the main wiring is stripped out. There's someone that knows what they're doing. It's not a, uh, amateur, it's a professional person who's doing it.
Okay, we as a suspect, but we don't have much charge, of course, so we, we know what it is. Charge you for some, it's a year ago.
Can somebody come in here and turn their lights up, you know, so you can, you can watch out for a property? He could be doing damage to you.
Sure, I mean, that's, who's going to take care of that responsibility? You or Moses?
I mean, I can look into it if I just wanted to.
Sure.
Yeah, well, all they have to do is, the system is still there. We just need to find out who is we have to, to save them to the city.
Sure.
I'll find out, and let you know more.
Thank you. Any other questions for city inspectors? Thank you, sir. Donna McKenzie, Parkland Recreation.
Good evening. Um, Spike had a close for the year. Um, we had seventeen of Big and Reynolds. Um, just to let you know, I am aware that the letters are falling off the front of the senior center building. Um, they were put up there with double-sided tape. And they're just falling off. So that, I won't be addressing that. I also, um, had Alabama Power to come out and remove the power in the medi, me, get it back. Meter off of the marquee sign, which is located at the playground. We'll be taking that sign down. It looks horrible, it's between the kids throwing rocks and the storm coming through. So that will be coming down.
Are you going to replace it with something now, or are you?
Yes, yes. Uh, waiting on quotes for repair of the power box at the concession stand, where water leaked into it. Um, once that gets replaced, hopefully that should fix the AC problem, since there was no power going to AC. Uh, also, school board repair, um, they will be doing some wiring and, uh, replacing all the bugs with LED bugs. And also, a while back, uh, had a dumpster moved to, between the football field and the baseball field. I will be addressing issues with youth football and soccer league for the condition of their parks being left in after their gangs.
Okay. Alright, thank you, any questions for Parkland? If not, move on to Papa Works and Michael Lloyd.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're kind of working on town with thirteen hundred block of third avenue for super current dumping, and we had the guys over there this morning. And, uh, I'd like to thank, uh, Fire Chief last week. We had a medical emergency at the street department. And, uh, they came and, you know, cleared me out, so I really appreciate that. Uh, other than that, we just don't have anything else to do. But we're working on lots and, you know, changing cameras around, trying to, you know, stop that.
Any questions for Michael Lloyd?
Oh, I got one.
Sure, whatever.
Hey Mike, that, um, trash truck is on the outside of Wendy's. I know there's private parking there, but have you seen it?
Take that in one.
Somebody that's in Chinese restaurant.
They be working on that place, they got a, they had a pan there. On the weekend, they come out Saturday and Sunday, and they be working on that place.
Yep.
So, I mean, we get.
I've been trying to catch them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I've seen the dumpster there, but, uh, during the week, there's no one there. So obviously, they're coming on the weekend or at night.
Yeah, they are, I, I've seen them on the weekend, Saturday and Sunday. And, I mean, I guess they too lazy to put that stuff over in it though.
So what I could do, uh, man, is, uh, put a sign up that says stop work. I can do that tomorrow, just post it on the outside, and I'll be there tomorrow. Hopefully, we'll get some kind of traction from it.
Sure.
Because people with businesses that are around, like the finance place and the, and the work line, in a real place, because that's on the back of your building, it's a nice.
Got you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're inside too, we're going to have to post the lot. We go over there tomorrow, so, we'll kill two birds with one stone.
I do mind.
Alright, thank you, we move to next item on the agenda. Meeting up to the public, that's don't wish to address this body, but let me come in. Three minutes, we have Christopher Walker, eleven forty-six, Blue Springs. Oh, we need to remove the council, I'm sorry. Boy, I do a lot of talking, I thought you were.
I do want to thank everybody for what took place, uh, on the twenty sixth. I thank you for your support. I do have a start. I need everybody. I need your help. I need your guys, I need your prayers.
Thank you.
I told Bill a lot of data, um, chief, that old speed sign over there by the school, they can't. Now, I'm gonna take it down, see if we can move it on, what is driving, a little bit of stock, so it'll slow down a little bit. See if we can move it over there and just slow it down. And then the next, I told Bill, I'm just gonna stay in state, we wanna see if I open up some, uh, applications to the store that the chamber comes. So he said, well, it's all right, sir, if you can, uh, find a date, go ahead and announce it. We'll get the chamber back open.
That's a thriving organization, but certainly does enjoy support from the public side. Thank you. That's it. Counselor.
Um, it's time to start, the department has started working on budgets. Um, we, um, we got a little time, we don't have a whole lot of time, this is what you, you're in September, uh, for group games month. Um, and I just wanted to remind you of things, just cause our, you know, we not getting revenue yet. This is our downtime in the city. You know, making payroll, make sure everything else is covered. I just wanted everybody to remind everybody of the mine club for spending and everything. But go ahead, start working on your budgets, go, uh, we can go get, we can get that thing. Cause I know we don't have a lot of things on our budget that we're not gonna cover. And so, um, should we wish you a fabulous, uh, well, thank you.
Thank you, all right. Counselor Miller.
I wanna, uh, publicly thank everyone that went out and voted on the twenty sixth, that voted for me. And I wanna thank you for your donations. I wanna thank you for your well wishes. And I wanna thank you for everything that everybody did for me to get me back in office. And I really, really, really appreciate it. And I promise to work as hard as I can for the next four years as I've always done. I pray for some.
Thank you. Thank you, Captain.
Yeah, Orlando was so excited about the line. Uh, we have someone full time. He forgot to mention that, um, the neighborhood association is starting their verification award back. So, um, December, Christmas will be the first award granted. And this award is for your yard and the light signs. And I think it's a great idea to encourage people to, uh, put up their Christmas decorations and put your lights and everything in the yard and we got a, a brave egg sign for you. So I would just encourage y'all to help us, to make our neighbor look pretty. So that award will be given out in December. So just keep that in mind when you start putting up your Christmas decorations. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move to opening meeting of the public, Chris Walker. Yes, sir.
My name is Chris Walker, uh, pastor church over in Houston. And, uh, we wanna bring a certain location over here, in there. So I wanted to go in for y'all and find out if it's, if it's gonna be okay. I wanna ring that shop center over by Peter Williams and, uh, Metro Dixie. And that's up to you and the property owner.
Okay.
Yeah, and you will have them. It's okay with us, I don't think. If I lose any zone, we should. That's what I talk to you.
Yes, yes, uh.
So now, since I got the proof, I'll get you out.
Okay.
And let you come out and take a look at it.
Okay.
Okay, thank y'all.
Okay.
You got it?
Okay. You say a phone?
Yes.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
All right, thank y'all.
All right, all of the different seven sixteen registered.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to just add a bunch of information to you. Seventy two years ago, in two thousand fifty two, the Alabama legislature passed a law to put all gasoline tax dollars into bridges and highways only. That law remains in effect today. There is no funding from the state for public transportation. Children ride yellow school buses throughout their time in school. But when they graduate high school, there is no public transportation available for them to look for jobs, attend local colleges, or to just play and get around in their communities. That's because all of the gasoline tax dollars paid by those yellow school buses go toward bridges and highways only. In twenty eighteen, the Alabama legislature passed the Alabama Public Transportation Trust Fund bill. But they can't seem to find any money to put in it. And in the past two legislative sessions, bills were proposed to collect five dollars on car tags purchased in the state. But those bills never got out of committees. Hopefully that bill will be proposed in the upcoming legislative session, and we get the chance to vote on its passage. Those funds would fill the empty transportation trust fund and use, and be used for robust public transportation. That certainly would help future high school graduates and all citizens get robust public transportation. Now, I am eighty six years old. I would prefer to not drive because people do not know how to stop at stop signs or slow down for the yellow signs or any of those things. And I just believe that good public transportation would be good for all of us, whether we want it. And if you've noticed, in Midfield, we have houses that are really nice looking houses. But you can't see them because people have to have five and six cars, four cars, three cars, in order to at least get to and from work. We do provide funding for public transportation in, from Midfield. We need to be able to have faster, more robust public transportation so that people who live in Midfield can get to and from wherever they need to go. And that's just my wish. Oh, and I have some cards for the, the sign that, uh, that I'd like for you to take and visit the Action Coalition for Transit. If you'll take this and visit the website and please sign to as a person who's particularly interested in getting public transportation. So that we can go to Montgomery and scare.
Marilyn Williams, five forty, Love Creek Street.
The chief kinda colored what I was about to talk about, um, so if you going upward, leaving the meat market, on your car, it says fifteen miles an hour. And then y'all got a sign right there that I guess for school, but it should say the school hours.
We, we are working, we got beacons, we're working with, work to get the beacons up when we were having to, our quarters apart.
So I'm just wondering, if I'm going up that way, if I'm not going fifteen, cause it say fifteen from that sign all the way to the lot.
No, man. We're being administered right now, we're enforcing. And once we have the beacons in and they're programmed and working, there'll be programs, two hour, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty. There'll be programs during those times that we have posted, we're going for fifteen miles an hour. But right now, until we get those up, it's just thirty mile an hour.
Okay, thank y'all for this, this, I'll another phone for y'all soon.
I think so, if she's saying the sign says fifteen miles an hour.
Yes, ma'am.
So how do they know?
It's, fifteen is, is during, during school hours.
What is y'all saying?
Yes, ma'am.
It does, uh, but.
No, it doesn't, I can't. Those are the signs that have been up there for years. But we're in the process of, uh, of purchasing beacons, flashing beacons that'll have the, the signs that, that fifteen miles an hour is enforced, and those signs will come down.
Yeah, we're actually waiting on the hot well.
So I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so if you going up, like I said, it say fifteen all the way up. But if you coming back down, what, what, it say thirty?
Thirty, yes, ma'am.
So.
Now, we got the crosswalk.
Yeah, the, the full crosswalk, it's started by the sign.
That's only done, done two hours. And we don't wanna take those down since school is actually in session. During school hours, we would prefer people show hours, just them right now. But that's not what we're enforcing with the cameras right now, until we get the new sign down quick.
Mary Gold.
Good evening. I'm still waiting on the speed box. Mister Lord.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, cause I'm, I'm, I'ma keep coming and praying today. We just talked about the camera, and then called me about two weeks. And the grass, that went to line in front of me. Need some weed sign. Look some more across the street right there. I got this morning, about four, I can use the bathroom. That man seen, I got with the flashlight, with that slang blade, trying to cut that grass. Something need to be done in this yard. So.
That time I went over, I got pissed out, so.
Need some time, man, y'all. Why?
I wouldn't eat that. Front page. Get shot, put him in the dark, put him in the light there.
I know, I, I, it's working too. But, uh, some need to be done about, for real. And Mister Davis has, that man come out there on Friday, every two weeks, he cut red in the front. You saw him leaving one time, and I saw him last Friday. He over there in the size, it's just ridiculous. I wanna see back in the verification board too, but I can't see with all this stuff right now. So I wish something would be done. Enforce the rules.
Thank you. Reginald Wilson, six nine, Dr. Martin, being driven by.
Good evening, everyone.
Good.
Thank you for your support. Thank you for your vote. Like you said earlier, it takes all of us. So I really look forward to working with each and every one of you. And on the day of election, I had a previous talking with a young man extensively about man health. And he provided me with some good information that I did not know. And I wish he could share more of, of the situation that he went through because it's very important. Point is, we don't get across, men, we need to make sure we go to the doctor. Make sure we get tested for it, and we need to get tested for it, to make sure that we here and we gonna continue to be around for a long time. I really wanna thank him. Now, appreciate you. Well, now, we see each other men, we need to say, hey, how you doing? Are you okay? I gotta get back to the doctor. I keep informing every six months with my doctor. And guys, it's really important. Let's look, let's, let's take care of ourselves. Appreciate you.
All righty, one o'clock, six oh four, eighty three.
Really, everyone. On September the eleventh, twenty twenty five, a resident by name of Miss Friday, on Seven Avenue, eight oh eight, reporting the class. She was moving out of her house due to mold in her house. Resident was in the house more, less than a hundred days. I asked the council to bar any more residents from renting their house, albeit it's a session eight house. So what do we need to do about that?
What's that address?
It's on Seven Avenue, eight oh eight.
Eight oh eight. Call the county, they're doing.
Okay, there you go.
Seventh Avenue, right?
Right, Seventh Avenue. And also, six oh six has a lot of grass. I was planning on cutting. I said, no, that's too much grass, put too much stress on my, on my putting, I ain't gonna get paid. Please, we're talking and cutting, y'all put sign in there, y'all.
Six oh six?
Yes, it's a session eight. And man who owned the house is the owner of it. And I don't have a phone number for it. He's on session eight, so gotta get all the information from session eight.
Can you see a bathroom?
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, let's go, Deion K. Jones.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deion Jones, and I am, I'm one of the place two for city council. I'm excited to be working with you all and try to uplift the city and bring more things to the city, so I'm so excited. And I also had a question too, um, on my street, I stay on sixteen fifty six, Marson Street. There's a black dumpster in the road. Um, if you coming out of the alley from McFadden Elementary and make that right, I don't know if the city put it there or if it's my neighbors.
Neighbor. We tried to make contact, man, inspector this morning. People's over there.
Yeah, cause it's hard, like, the school hours are in, they can't go by. Yeah, and then the other side is kinda, the road's kinda messed up, so they having to go right there, and.
We'll get on in the morning.
Yeah, we're, we're gonna take care of it.
All right, thank you.
All right. Well, this administration has three council meetings left, so I guess I'll be saying my farewell wishes, uh, somewhere along that, uh, journey. All right, Chair, uh, number one that's had to sign up, Chair Taylor, what's your name?